Mr. Buban?
Here.
Mr. Coughlin?
Here.
Vice President Frey?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Sore?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Ms. Tarpinion?
Here.
Ms. Jenter?
Here.
Excused, our President Dirks and Yoli Beth Fitzgibbons.
And before we entertain public comment, I'm supposed to remind the board that we've received more comments that were not speaking into our microphones, so if we could all make an attempt to do so, it would be appreciated. And, are we gonna do this?
Sure, one as well.
First? Sure. It looks like we are.
This is more entertaining than this.
Alright.
Good evening, everyone. We are the Stoughton High School Magical Singers, and we're currently in our busy time of year singing holiday carols all around Dane County, so we really appreciate you having us here tonight. We'll be singing two songs for you. A traditional Renaissance song called "Throw Open Your Shutters," and our second song will be a holiday carol called "Caroling Caroling." Hope you enjoy.
Throw open your shutters, you mazes and lads. Sound out your trumpets, be glad, be sound and rejoice. Celebrate this festive day, hey! Ring your bells, soul she play. Celebrate this festive day, hey! Ring your bells, soul she play. Gather ye neighbors with candles bright. Sing out your choruses, sing out delight. Celebrate this festive day, hey! Ring your bells, soul she play. Celebrate this festive day, hey! Ring your bells, soul she play. Climb to the rooftops and shout your noise. Join us in dancing, rejoice. We dance and rejoice. Celebrate this festive day, hey! Ring your bells, soul she play. Celebrate this festive day, hey! Ring your bells, soul she play. Sing, ring, dance.
Hello, everybody. I am Nick Swenson, and I am a junior.
I'm Hailey Whitmire, and I'm also a junior.
My name's Charion, and I'm also a junior.
I'm Abby Gibson, and I'm also a junior.
I'm Isaiah Rowley, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Carly Wentzall, and I'm a junior.
I'm Anthony Gailey, and I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Emily Galloway, and I'm a senior, and next year I plan to attend college at an undetermined college for musical theater.
Hello, everyone. I'm Seth Charleston. I'm a senior as well. I plan to attend college with a major of music performance.
Hi, I'm Plana Pope. I'm a senior, and after high school, I plan to study criminology at a college yet to be determined.
Hi, my name's Matt Reed. I'm also a senior here, and next year I'll be taking a year off of school to go to basic training for the air force.
My name's Alyssa Wicks. I'm a senior as well, and next year I plan on going to college for nursing.
I'm Brody Lufuski, and I am a senior, and I'm thinking of going to Milwaukee for graphic design.
I'm Paige Sager. I'm also a senior. I plan to study dermatology after high school at an undetermined college.
I'm Elijah Crumholtz. I'm a senior, and I plan to study education and psychology at an undecided college.
Hi, I'm Natalie Cross, and I'm a junior.
Caroling, caroling, now we go. Christmas bells are ringing. Caroling, caroling through the snow. Christmas bells are ringing. Joyous voices, sweet and clear. Sing the sad of hearts to cheer. Ding dong, ding dong. Christmas bells are ringing. Caroling, caroling through the town. Christmas bells are ringing. Caroling, caroling up and down. Christmas bells are ringing. Mark ye well the song we sing. Glad some tidings now we bring. Ding dong, ding dong. Christmas bells are ringing. Caroling, caroling near and far. Christmas bells are ringing. Following, following yonder star. Christmas bells are ringing. Sing we all this happy morn. Lo, the King of Heaven is born. Ding dong, ding dong. Christmas bells are ringing.
Can we also give Mr. Casey a round of applause?
Glad I'm not following them.
Right. So now we would entertain any comment by the public, if there's anyone that would like to address the board. Seeing no one approaching the podium, we will move on to the legislative update.
I just, I mean, it's all in there. Sorry about the snap through at the last meeting. I had sent Becky the wrong one, so hopefully you got that one from last time, and then I've made sure I sent you the right one this time. Check out the WSB Board's Taking Action page. We are one of four districts that have passed a resolution for the voucher transparency bill. Stevens Point, Oak Flair, Holman, and Stoughton. So if you have any questions about what was in the report, just let me know.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about any of that? Then it's up to you, Tim.
Okay. I just have two quick things. First of all, the Magical Dinner, which you just saw, an excellent performance, is this weekend, and so if you have a chance to go see them, it's well worth it. They give a great performance every year, and this is the first time, I think, in a long time that we don't have a board meeting on Monday night performance. Usually you have a board meeting. And then I'm passing out, this is a publication, and the final publication will be printed by Inkworks, and this will be sent to every household in the district. And just a little bit, you know, it talks about each school, it talks a little bit about some of the things we're doing, it talks about ways to get involved in the district, it talks a little bit about our financial, our membership data, you know, it talks about how you connect in different social media, et cetera. Derek's been working on this for a while, and it looks fabulous, and so this will be going out very shortly to everybody, just as a, what's happening in the district, and we plan to do at least one more of these this year in the spring, but it's a chance to get our message out, to get people to know what we're doing and what's happening in the district, so I'll give you a preview copy.
Well, that sounds great. Has anybody got any questions for Tim?
I would like to just point out that there's no information on the 4K program in Good Finder. It's part of our school program. Maybe in the next issue we could add some.
Okay.
I think it's an attribute to the community that we have a 4K program, so.
Mr. Sullivan, you're going to present the consent agenda, is that correct? I am. I move approval of the November 27th, 2017 regular board meeting minutes. I move approval of the November 16th, December 18th, 2017 check register as presented. We would like to say thank you to the following individuals and groups, and move approval of their donations to the district. $1,800 from Stoughton Sports Boosters Inc. for Neptune Custom Music. $1,518 from Highside Enterprises for the Stoughton Norwegian Dancers 2018 Spring Tour. $1,000 from the SHS Band Boosters for marching band staff and equipment. $751.92 from Sand Hill WFK for ukuleles. Instrument rentals from Ward Broad Music for Fox Kigonton Sand Hill Elementary students to try out band instruments valued at $456. And related cash donation budget adjustments for $5,069.92. I move approval of the Riverbluff Spanish Students Field Trip to Concordia Language Villages in May 2018. And I move approval of professional educator resignation of Jeff Klug, pending the receipt of liquidated damages in the amount of $1,000. The consent agenda has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And the consent agenda has passed. And next up is Erica Transportation Update. I'm sorry, what?
No, no, that's right.
Okay. Jump in if I miss something.
Good evening. I'm actually going to introduce Karen Johnson tonight. She is our newest transportation coordinator. Karen was hired into this role the...
August, yes, right? Last week, not this week?
Yep, and she's kinda hit the ground running, so I'm gonna be here to help answer questions as they may come up, but I'm gonna hand it over to Karen to kinda walk through the information that we have. We'll use this here. Take it away.
Welcome. You drive. I drive bus, not a mouse. Alright, so I don't drive bus anymore either, but... Our school, SASD, Stoughton Area School District Transportation covers approximately 114 square miles, and that averages out about 50 miles per day for each driver for their normal morning and afternoon routes. In covering that 114,000 miles, last year we traveled around 170,000 miles in 2016-17, and transported around 1,250 riders on our daily routes. In addition to our daily bus routes, we're also responsible for getting students safely to and from extracurricular events. Our drivers covered 238 athletic and classroom trips last year totaling 14,355 miles. That's about one and a half trips per day, and averaging about 60 miles per trip. As of yesterday, we employed 26 people in the Transportation Department. We hired one today. So 24 of those are drivers. Our drivers have an average of, well, it's probably gone down a little bit, a little over five years of service in Stoughton. Our Transportation Department includes myself, Transportation Coordinator Julie Speth, the Administrator, and Amy Clark, our Mechanic, and 24 bus drivers. One of the things that I'm big at, and I'm sure the school is too, is ongoing safety and training for both our bus drivers and for our students. As drivers, we are trained and certified in CPR and AED usage, first aid, lumbar pathogens, mandatory reporting for traffic violations, and again, stops not for ourselves. And we participated, my second day on the job, I participated in the ALIS training, which was training for active shooter response training, so that sent a good message. But it was fun, and it was actually very informative, and I highly valued the training. We also collaborated with the schools to participate in the PBIS training, which includes bus evacuations for our students. Through middle school, we do bus evacuation training through the front door and explain to them rear door exit evacuations and window evacuations, but we don't actually send them through windows or out the back door, so. We also go through bus rules with all the students. At some time or another, every student's gonna ride a bus, and so we like to share with them up ahead, upfront, what our expectations are as they travel with us on a bus. Oh, yeah, that's right. No, I missed one. One of the exciting things for me, because we are doing fire extinguisher training for all of our bus drivers this January, so the Stoughton Fire Department's gonna come down to the bus garage and do some flash pan fires for us, and give us fire extinguishers to shoot appropriately at the fire, so for us, it's pretty exciting. And then one of our drivers is also gonna be providing the rest of us drivers with wheelchair security. We maintain 28 buses a week, and our goal is to replace each bus when it reaches 10 years of age. We recently signed a contract for two new full-size buses, sort of like the one in the window, but a different brand, or on the picture, and one short minibus. Our average capacity for a bus is 72 to 77 passengers. That's, with a class size of 25, we can get almost three classes in a bus. If you include parents and aides in that, we don't quite make that, but back in the 70s, we could only get, our bus capacity is around 50 to 60 passengers, and we only got two to two and a half classes on a bus. Well, what's new with transportation? Me? We currently provide transportation for two alternate schools in Madison, Common Threads and Richardson Schools. They provide students the opportunity to learn in an environment that is different from our standardized school curriculum, in hopes that they will get the education that they need as well. We participated in the sixth grade orientation last year, met with families, answered their transportation-related questions, and then proactively contacted those families who showed interest in transportation to help get them set up prior to registration, prior to the school year. And then trainees, we already covered that one. Community participation, this morning, or yesterday, there was two things on the slide. Today's there's one, but as of this afternoon, there should be two. One is stuff the bus. We participate with Alliance Club. We provide a bus for them to park out at Walmart, and then the local community buys school supplies for children in need. They stuff the bus, and then the bus brings supplies back here to be sorted and distributed appropriately. And then also, we had an event in the past called Shop With A Cop, where partners, we provide transportation for needy children in the community to go shopping with a police officer at Walmart this time of year, and we took it off because we hadn't heard from them, and this morning I heard from them, so it's back on the agenda. Things to come, and things we're working on. Right now, we're building processes and procedures for bus drivers, not only bus drivers to follow, but our student riders, and also for trip leaders, athletic trip leaders, and teachers. We feel that if we can properly communicate what our expectations are, there's no less than a chance for surprises, and it also helps us support each other and transporting our students safely. We are also looking at ways to improve our overall route safety and efficiency. One, a couple slides back, I talked about mandatory reporting. Part of that has to do with traffic violations. We have, even though we have red blinking lights on our buses and a stop arm that goes out, most people...
And a stop sign.
And a stop sign. Most people do not unfortunately stop for our buses, so it puts our students at risk, and our driver's focus is getting the students across the street safely, so they're focusing on the students, and the stop arm cameras will help us gather the information we need to report those offenders. First offense, the police department usually gives somebody a warning, but if it's a repeat offender, they will get ticketed and fined. So it's, in my mind, a big safety issue for our students. It happens very frequently. Another thing, a project we started was GPSs, with the ability to program our entire routes into the GPS, so it's a little different than the one we put in our car where it goes from here to there. This will allow us to program up to 50 different routes in it with a stop. Each student's stop programmed in it as well. And coming from being a driver, it's impossible to memorize, you know, for our substitute drivers to memorize that many routes. They change every year, and sometimes they change mid-year, and it's just a safety issue in my mind to be able for our substitute drivers to drive, listen to the GPS or follow GPS, and not have to worry about memorizing a route in five minutes, you know, because they're called out last minute, somebody calls them sick or whatever. So I'm looking into the feasibility of that, and maybe getting two or three units to test with our substitute drivers. But that's just starting. We're in information gathering right now. We, student bus rider IDs, we had gone away from IDing. We only used it in the past for middle school students. They're the ones that are most creative about getting a friend on a bus and taking them to a different location than what they signed up for. Our grade schoolers are pretty good about getting on enough where they're supposed to, and our high school students ride with a friend. So we've had an increase in the number of students that are trying to sneak on the bus, and so we just ordered, like, a bus pass ID card. It'll have their picture on it, and it'll say bus ID, so that students who are signed up to ride transportation will be allowed to ride, and those who are not will need a permission slip from their parent and from somebody at the school. It happens more frequently than we would like to admit, I guess. We have a lot of experience in our bus driver pool, so we are tapping into that experience and having those people lead and train the other drivers. One example earlier was wheelchair security. We have one that's gonna be... Just went blank. Like, pre-trip inspections, and I went blank on the other one. There's another one. Anyways, we're trying to use the resources we have rather than going outside if we don't have to. And then we have online training for our drivers. Ongoing challenges, shortage of quality bus drivers. It's taken me three-plus months to find one driver that we could make an offer to. It's not just unique to our school district, it's become a problem everywhere. We're actually in better shape than some local community schools are, or private companies are. The amber lights on vehicles passing our buses is an ongoing challenge, however, we are looking at ways we can capture that information, possible cameras on the stop arms. And then also, road construction has affected our routes a little bit, with three bridges out on I-90, but hopefully, I heard, they were supposed to be back this week, so we shall be. Yeah, they were supposed to be back in November, too, but... So, do you guys have any questions for me? Or Erica? Go ahead.
I noticed a bus out in front of Stoughton Garden Center a while back that said hiring drivers. Was that a new technique? I don't recall ever seeing that before, just to...
Just trying whatever we can to get people to apply.
Did that work? Did it get, did it...
It got noticed, but we didn't get any applications through it, so... But it's getting visibility, I guess.
That's a good, good idea. And then the sneaking on the bus, what is the, what is the issue with that? Is it the in-town routes, or is it the out?
Well, once they get on the bus, we have to let them off somewhere, and if we, when you have school letting out and all the students coming on the bus, it's really hard for a driver to manage who's getting on and who's not, and we're responsible for those students. If we don't, one, don't know they're riding, you know, we don't know it's a non-registered student. If something were to happen, we wouldn't have traceability for them. The other is, you know, parents like to know where their students are going.
So then when they're not, when they're picked off, then they're just left at the school? Is this happening at the schools, or is it happening at different stops?
Most of our drivers are at least familiar enough with the faces of their students, and they'll catch it on the bus, or within a couple blocks, and they'll turn around and have the students get off. There have been, earlier this fall, we had a student get on who was supposed to go to grandma's house. The driver knew the student, so allowed the student onto grandma's house, but let them know, we actually followed up with the parents, let them know they need to provide a note for the future, because we don't...
Yeah, I would just be concerned about safety.
Yeah.
I mean, I get that point, but I don't want to leave a kid sitting...
Right.
...on the curb someplace either, so...
No, they come back to the school, or... We don't just drop them off. No. That fixes a problem, but no, we don't do that.
It's not like cash cap.
I don't know that one, but I'll take your word for it. Okay, yeah, just a follow-up on that. Thanks.
Other questions?
The new driver, did we lose one, or were we hiring for an additional?
Still hiring.
Still hiring, because we had a little bit of a deficit at the end of last year.
Correct.
We were short.
And then my position was open as well.
Right. Okay. And then, I have one. The Common Threads and the Richardson School Program, I guess I don't remember hearing about this. Is that new for us?
I, while we had students that have attended in those facilities in the past, I don't know specific, I don't know a whole lot about them. I know Hailey is here and is familiar a little bit more so with those opportunities to provide kids, but we are, because it's a district placement of a student, we are required to provide transportation, so...
Okay, so it's a mandated transport?
Yep.
Great. A community member I see regularly has complained to me about student behavior on the buses. Is that an issue for you all?
Yes. Our students, certain routes are wonderful. There's certain routes where we have discipline issues on the bus. We have been, we work with our drivers. Actually, I went out, I have been out with drivers to talk to the students. I have been, not just me, but Julie, our Transportation Coordinator, and also our stuff to do with drivers, will all, not every day, but will hop on a bus, you know, assess what's going on, help the driver, you know, either assign seats, or talk with the students, or I get feedback from that. I'll call parents, or Julie will call parents, and...
Schools will help, too, sometimes.
Yep, and the schools will help if we, our drivers, we're working with drivers to write out a behavior incident report on the students. Most of our drivers do not like doing that, because they like to give the students benefit of doubt, but for repeat offenders, or students that just, you know, can't control themselves, we do write up incident reports and we follow up with the school students and the parents, and they have to, you know, remove students from riding a bus if their behavior doesn't change. change. We're really close on one of our routes in that situation. So we've talked to the school, we've talked to the parents, we've written them up and they just can't sit in their seats and keep their hands to themselves. So they will not be riding with us much longer.
Okay, thank you.
I would say it's not unlike the different strategies that might be used in a classroom or other areas where our behaviors can be challenging. There's different strategies that our drivers use and again, Karen listed a few of them, but you know, those kinds of challenges exist in all of our school environments, including buses.
Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for presenting the information and for the work that you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thanks. I'm having fun as well.
John?
Yeah, so over the summer, we heard that, or we heard some possible forecasts of needing additional help in maintenance and we heard that dispatching was also quite a burden at the end of last school year. Are those still areas where we have staffing shortages or where you guys feel like we might need additional support?
I never know what tomorrow brings. I've learned that in this job. Right now, with the new hire, I'm feeling confident, but tomorrow can change. The beginning of the school year, being short a driver and other things that have come up, I've had to drive a couple of routes as a sub. I've had to dispatch a couple of days, but we're trying to, I try my best to not have to get in those shoes and allow our other drivers and they have to go those shoes. So we hired up, besides this one full, it's not really full-time. Besides our regular route driver, we did hire two on-call substitute drivers. One can only drive Monday and Tuesday mornings and the other one can only drive Monday and Wednesday afternoons. But it's enough so far.
I can speak a little bit to that too, just being part of the conversation last spring. And we have, we have worked with our maintenance department, talking about beyond the school buses, we have a number of vehicles that we maintain throughout the district too. So we're trying some different strategies. We've moved some of the maintenance work for those vehicles out of this department and we're, we're doing some of that work elsewhere. We're partnering with some vendors in town to provide some of those services just from a capacity standpoint. And like Karen said, the dispatching where we learned that in the past, we didn't always have somebody there available on the phones when drivers were out for routes. That is not the case anymore. We do work to have, you know, Karen said she's done it on occasion, Julie, our admin assistant, has done it on occasion. And then we do have, if our substitute drivers, when the substitute driver that we use is out, if she's not needed that particular day, she is also trained to do dispatching. So that is one, I mean, that was a big concern of mine last year that if our drivers are out and have an emergency, that we have somebody that's available to take those calls. So we've made some progress, not saying it's completely perfect. We're going to continue to look at some of those areas of growth and improvement that we need to keep working on. But I would say that Karen's been very collaborative and very open to ideas on how we can try to come up with some ways to make some improvements there.
Great. Thanks.
Other questions? All right, the only question I had was, how was our retention from drivers from last year? Did most of them, are most of them back this year?
Out of the ones driving last year, we had one not return because she had other things in her life that, her life is very busy right now. So she chose not to return. She's one of them that I brought in as a on-call driver for Monday and Wednesday afternoons, but that's all she could afford right now.
So there, well, there was her, there was another person that's not back. One of the people that retired, we actually hired him back, he filled one of our vacancies. So I'm thinking everybody but two, and then Karen obviously isn't a driver anymore, so we've had a couple of faces.
Well, thanks to you both for presenting all of that.
Thanks.
And up next is the school report cards with Judy and company.
Good evening. Well, excuse me, we're through interpreting school report cards. The school report cards are the state reporting to the district and the schools, the results of our standardized testing from last spring. So the test took place in April. Parents got individual scorecards for their children in August. In September, principals got their aggregate information from their schools that was embargoed. And then by October, we had it for the district and we're able to preview it to make sure that nothing looked radically out of place. That all goes back to the state. And then finally, it is unembargoed about a week ago, November 21st, and now we're here to share that information with you. It's a longer process than we expected when it went digital. So we'll start out with going over the layout of the report card. I believe you have these uploaded into your packets so that you can look at them. So the overall score is in the upper left-hand corner, the overall score. I'll say that all of the components of this front page go into the overall score for the district and the overall score for the school. If we take a look at the upper left-hand corner in each of these documents, you get an overall score. It is not an average score. It is a total for either the school or the district. I'm going to demonstrate this on the district report card. The accountability rating again is a ranking system. It is not an average, so it is an accumulation of points across the whole report card. And we fall in meeting and exceeding expectations. The school demographics are pretty important on this school report card because they influence the weighting, W-E-I-G-H-T, the weighting of the priority areas. And so you can compare the varying demographics of our schools across the community in both socioeconomic status and English learners and other demographics. The priority areas is really kind of a focus for our work. It includes student achievement. To, I am, to get to the number for student achievement, the raw number for student achievement, every child that scored, there's a number allocated to the above, at, below designations on an individual test. And then those are calculated for an overall score in English Language Arts and in Mathematics. In the priority areas, our school or district, information is compared to that at the state level. District growth in both English and math is now calculated in a value-added algorithm. It allows students that have challenges of maybe socioeconomic status or as an English language learner to be recognized in their calculation for growth. Let's see, how do I say this? In a value-added model, the algorithm adds small percentages to student scores who are in a demographic that makes their situation more challenging. So it could be students of poverty, it could be English language learners, it could be students with disabilities. So all of those groups can earn a small percentage additionally to their achievement score. Use value added to calculate growth over time. We expect our students to make one year's growth in one year's time. Closing the gaps in both English Language Arts and Mathematics is a place where we see the difference between students in sub-populations and subgroups of our whole. And it's compared then to our whole population. And so if we have a subgroup that is dramatically, scoring dramatically less than the population as a whole, that would be considered a gap and we would get information about how, what those sub-populations are so we can address that. That also includes a graduation rate. And finally, on track to post-secondary readiness, this is that college and career readiness. There are four indicators that the state uses to help guide us to make sure that we're not waiting until graduation date to determine whether or not we've been successful. So the graduation rate, the attendance rate, our third grade reading scores and our eighth grade math achievement scores, those have been determined as indicators along the way. An important piece about student engagement indicators, it says we have zero deductions. We have always had zero deductions, but it's not something that we take casually or that we just assume will always happen for us because it doesn't always happen for every school district in the state. We are attentive to our attendance and so that we don't have truancy issues. And we are attentive to dropout rates. Our dropout rate is very low and we have methods to capture students who are struggling long before they get to that point. So while we usually have zero deductions here, it's not something that we should take lightly. And finally, our longitudinal graphs, these cover the course of two years now because this will be the second year that we have used the standardized tests, the ACT, the Aspire and the Forward Exam for our school report card. And so our English Language Arts reading is compared to the state and then our Mathematics is compared to the state on those assessments. Let's see, I'm not sure if you have questions about that layout before we go on to our next, the next part. What I've tried to show here is the overlap of the information that we use. One piece of information, one indicator is this, these standardized tests, the Forward, the Aspire and the ACT that give us a high overview, how are we doing? It's a look at how are we doing in curriculum, how are we doing in instructional delivery, how are we doing in meeting the needs of individuals within our total population. But it's not the only tool we use. It is a lagging indicator for us. We use other standardized assessments and other local assessments. So you hear us speak to the STAR assessments periodically throughout the year, our Fanta's and Penel assessments for our reading support or for our, to inform our reading instruction. PALS is a four K kindergarten assessment for reading readiness. Access is an assessment that we use for our English learners. So we have lots of assessments that help inform our action. And then probably the most important assessments that we use to inform our daily work are our classroom processes assessments and rubrics. So all of those things contribute to determining how successful we're being with our instructional delivery curriculum, student growth. Questions on the layout? Okay, awesome. Then what will happen next is each of our building principals will have the opportunity to walk you through a few slides. This is not a comprehensive report on everything that we're doing. We actually met this morning to, to make sure that we were being fairly consistent in our presentation and we reminded and cautioned each other that you get three slides, you can't have every amazing thing that you're doing. So our goal is to speak to the strategies that we identified last year that were going to lead to our improvement, our continuous improvement, and then how that influenced our, the results at a particular building. Then to identify the strengths which are maybe represented in the report card and may be represented in other things that we're doing as well. And then finally, our next actions, again, for our continuous improvement and how this particular tool can help us define some of our next actions. So we'll do that. Fox Prairie and Krista Rogers starting out.
Such a cute picture, those little ones. So these were some strategies we used last school year that would inform the report card that Judy just presented to you. So our literacy specialists co-taught with each grade level to strengthen our literacy instruction. Some of the classes previous to that, we would have literacy co-teaching in kindergarten and first grade and we're having success in those two grade levels, so we expanded it through fifth grade. During the school year last year, depending on what grade level, depending on how long they got to co-teach with their reading specialists, as the kids got older, they would have longer blocks of time that would cover units rather than small pieces throughout the year. So we kind of spread out their expertise for everyone to benefit from that way. Our grade level teams met weekly with specialists to discuss lessons and share strategies. One of the big strategies and resources that we introduced last year was our Sarah Valla resource. It's a research-based, not really a program, but a resource we can look at to say, this child's having a problem in a certain comprehension strategy, what are some activities we can do with this child or a group of children to move their reading forward. A big piece of comprehension that we had, it's not as easy to assess comprehension through the Forward Exam or other exams like that. So this was a big piece to kind of fill in the gaps that way. Our literacy and math committees met once a month to discuss resources needed and then also to plan some parent engagement events. We had a math family night last January. We also had a literacy breakfast, I believe it was in March last year, where we shared different resources with parents so they can work with their students at home and also shared some of the student work and highlighted the different things they were doing. Our literacy scores showed growth last year on the report card. Our math scores were where we're kind of worried. They, there were some areas of growth and some areas of opportunity. One thing we've noticed is that some of our students really need work in place value. So that's something we're working on a lot this year is making sure that they understand the different place value as they're moving forward. What's going well at Fox Prairie? This again, from last year and continuing on to this year. Our fifth grade teachers implemented a personalized learning structure that's been really successful for our students. And then they shared what they were doing with teachers throughout the district. We've had people come visit and just observe and have time to sit down and talk with them about their personalized learning. One thing I want to highlight with that personalized learning, it's not just having the kids choose what they're doing, it's having the kids really involved in the goal setting and realizing what areas of growth they have and how they're going to move forward. I think that's something that as the kids are moving lower, lower in the grade levels, letting them see like, oh, you really need help in this part of math or this part of literacy, how can we do that together? And making it a partnership between the students and the teachers, not just the teachers telling the kids what they need to do. So I think that's a really important piece. Our test scores in fifth grade last year were really, really good. We saw a lot of growth in literacy and a lot of growth in math. So we've slowly, this year, and I'll talk about it on the next slide too, we've moved that into, fourth grade is beginning to pick up more on that. And I think once we become stronger in the personalized learning and the goal setting, we can move it down throughout the different grade levels. Another thing that was really fun last year was a lot of our PBIS activities, focusing on that behavior and, you know, keeping people safe and kind, doing your part and speaking up. The students earned a day of fun where we took some of the students to the high school and went swimming. We had other people coming in to different activities with them. So just kind of keeping that engagement piece there. And all those things, of course, have driven our goals and strategies for this school year. So we continue to meet weekly. That's something we've done for many years, but we're being more structured in what we're doing. So this year, we're on a rotational basis. We talk about reading, writing, math and behavior. We talk about reading, writing, math, and behavior, and we're analyzing student work in those meetings. So, for example, tomorrow's a data team meeting, so we're going to be looking at our STAR data and our Fanta's and Penel data as mid-year checkpoints to see how the students are doing. Last week, we met about behaviors. We talked about different behavior referrals and different behavior systems that we have in place for students and if we need to tweak them and move forward. Next week, we're talking about reading, and so we'll do some more planning around Pearson curriculum and then move forward to writing the following week. Another resource we introduced was again, that Sarah Valla resource. She just came out with a writing strategies book, not just a comprehension strategies book. So we have another resource for teachers to go to if students are struggling in certain areas. DreamBox, which is a math intervention, is also made available for all elementary students. So this is something that Sand Hill and Key Ganza has as well. It's a great math intervention. The students go online and they basically play a bunch of different games, do some different activities, and see where their levels are. And then the great part about DreamBox is teachers get to go in and see where the students need help and assign different activities for the students to do. So a great intervention that kids can do at school and they can also access it at home if they choose to practice at home as well. Mary Richards is continuing to consult with math practices. In fact, she was in the district today, giving some feedback on different, the different math practices we have over at Fox AM Sand Hill. And tomorrow she'll be at Sand Hill in Key Ganza. So we are consistently working with her in our PD for our teachers and also PD for the principals to see what else we need to do, do to support. And I think that's really important at Fox since we are showing that we need a little bit more help in math. We continue to focus on responsive classroom implementation. We did train all the elementary, well, several elementary teachers in August and came back and shared all that training information with the staff that didn't attend. And so at staff meetings, we're continuing to roll out different pieces and checking in to see how it's going and what help can support me in that way moving forward. Our kindergarten implemented inquiry-based model similar to Key Ganza this year. So far, been very successful. The teachers have really enjoyed it and the students are learning a lot as well. And then fourth grade, like I said before, has started to do more personalized learning with the goal setting with the students. Any questions for Fox?
So it looks like there's a lot of focus on improving overall core instruction. What, you mentioned it with DreamBox, what are you, from a, I guess the term is tier two interventions, do you have in place? Or what systems do you have in place to address the students where, who aren't just respice as much as you're improving core instruction, aren't necessarily responding to in the way that they need to, to make gains that they have? So I guess my question is, what other types of interventions do you have?
Each grade level has a time in their schedule that is intervention time. So no overall core instruction is happening during that time, so the kids don't miss anything. During that time is when our learning strategists pull students out if they receive, pull-out intervention, or push in if they receive the push-in intervention. During the meetings we have, for those weekly meetings we have, a lot of the time is focused around what strategies are you using with the student? Are they responding and keep doing that? Or if they're not responding, we need to change it to something else. I mentioned those data teams that we have about, it's about every six weeks when the calendar allows it that way. And we sit and look at, is this, are they responding well to this intervention? Do we have progress monitoring that's working? If it is, we continue. If it's not, we brainstorm other ways we can meet the needs of those students. And it's not just teachers, I mean, we sit and talk about it, but then we also involve the parents in it too, so they know what's happening.
So you have actual learning strategists, reading specialists providing some of those interventions?
Absolutely.
Instead of just the core teachers?
Yep. Tier two and tier three interventions.
Great.
Yep. Anyone else? All right.
Key Ganza, oh boy. So last year, we really felt like we had to focus, we had a lot of work to do. And so our theory of action was if we focus on coherent instruction and assessment and really ensure that our core practices are solid, while focusing on behavioral systems and social emotional support. And at the same time, building our family, community engage, like involvement and engagement while lifting student and staff engagement, we would increase overall math and reading achievement. And we are very pleased to say that on multiple measures, not only STAR, but FMP, but also our, our school report cards, we made pretty significant growth. And we feel like this is a testament to how far we've come as, as a school. So we went up 4.9 from, from 15, 16 to 16, 17. Obviously, we're not, we're not stopping. We have a long way to go, but I think it shows us that we're on the right path. In terms of what is going well, did I skip this one? In terms of what's going well, just a few highlights, like really, our work has been around creating a coherent professional learning model that looks at reading and math and, and is really lifting up those practices that we think are critical for our professional learning for our students. We've implemented, last year, we implemented instructional rounds and we're deepening that. And that's a way of administrative here, district, district off partner, partnering with us at the school level to round in math, literacy, and behavior, to really get into classrooms and see what's happening at like a 20,000-foot view. And that gives us really next steps for developing professional learning and next steps for our teachers in terms of what do we need to be focusing on? Our teaching teams last year met weekly and that was new for Key Ganza. And that was really effective in getting us on the same page. We implemented last year, play, play-based, at kindergarten, we have moved that into first grade into an inquiry-based model. So it's really lifting that up and we've kind of turned it into STEAM in the evening or in the afternoon times. Last year, our PBIS implementation went from 62% to 88%, which is just another metric that shows what we were doing is working. We had a huge decrease in behavior referrals. In October last year, we had 93 referrals and this year, we had 33. So we've seen huge drops in, in our significant referrals. And there's been a massive increase in family engagement. Last year, we implemented watchdogs, we reimagined our Walk-a-Thon, we have all class, all grade levels are part of a closed Facebook group this year. And, and teachers are trying to post at least once a day to really post what kids are doing. It's pretty, been pretty well-received. And just overall increased student engagement, after-school clubs, student council operating at multiple levels. So those are the things that we kind of focused on last year and have moved into this year as well. So in terms of our, we kind of like to look at it in, what are our priority areas? We're looking at, again, coherent instruction and assessment's never going to go away. That's our work. It's also about inspiring innovation. How do we move that play-based to inquiry-based across, across the school? Social-emotional learning, we need to continue to refine our processes, especially as we move, as we look with a tight and focus at tier two and tier three for kids that need more intensive supports behaviorally. And we are really refining and refining our inclusive service delivery with students with disabilities, with a very much an asset best based in equity lens. Something that's really worked well for us this year is we have allocated our instructional code, our reading interventionist positions and really said at Key Ganza, and this isn't true for all schools, but for at Key Ganza, right now, we need to improve our core instruction. And so we need to make sure that we have a really robust core. And so we have, our reading interventionist is doing part-time interventionist, but she's also doing a lot of coaching. And our math, our instructional coach is doing exclusively math. And so we've been able to really focus in on that core. So instead of focusing on like the kids that are not falling out, we're really saying, what can we do in that first teach to ensure that all kids are, are getting that high level of instruction? And so it's been really well-received and I think we're going to show great growth. What questions do you have?
Yeah, not a question. Yeah, sorry. I was, I was leaving time for questions. It's more of just a comment. You mentioned the, you mentioned the increase in your family engagement and that's something that is like incredibly evident to me just on your Facebook and social media pages. So that's awesome. It's great to see. And it's really visible. So good job.
Yeah. We're excited. And the Raptor allows us to actually track volunteers. So it's neat to see that engagement coming up and people really involved.
Great.
I have a question. I'll have, no, it's a good question. I'm a big, big advocate for play-based and inquiry-based. I make no secret about it. I think it's the way to go. How have you, how have, what's your perception on how parents have responded to that, knowing it's a very different way of thinking about school? It's sort of the anti-assembly line of thinking about school. And what support do you need in order to keep from us, for me, I don't know, in order to really continue to push that?
Really, the, the parent reception has been incredibly positive. And we did a survey last year with kindergarten and there was just one parent out of 60 that likes had some questions about the model. What really supports it is our, our social media work because people are able to see what it is. Like they're able to understand at the first grade, we're looking at light and sounds, we've got a tent set up and kids are in it and they're exploring and they're coming home excited. And so as a parent, as a parent myself, like you want to see your kids excited about learning. And I think that's what's been the, probably the most helpful tool is people, the parents are seeing it. They're seeing pictures of what their kids are doing and it's not this scary model. It's, it's like joy. And I think that has been probably the best tool to really calm folks' fear about the model. Our question as educators and as a, as a school team is, what does this look like as we get older? And how do we, I mean, I think Fox is, is doing that at the fourth and fifth. How do we move that up in a way that's really authentic and keeps that? And we have some of that as well. We have like a fifth grader this last couple of weeks ago brought in, he's a beekeeper. And he, he brought in everything you need to be beekeeping except the bees. And, and it was really fantastic to see that and that was part of his genius hour presentation. So that's, it's those conversations that we need to have as we move forward. So, but thank you for your support.
Yeah, and I guess my guess would even be some of your decrease in behavior referrals is a manifestation of the higher level engagement, that type of.
We had very few behavior referrals last year from kindergarten all year. And that was, I think, in direct result of kids are engaged in what they're doing, they're outside all year, even when it's 10 below. There they are in their perkas and they're investigating. So our work as teams is to keep lifting ourselves off the ledge a little bit to keep growing and try new things. And so far, so good. Thank you. Any other questions?
I am going to try and represent Sand Hill School and Jeff is out ill today, so I'll do what I know. In his report on strategies toward improving literacy and math, again, these were the strategies implemented last year to influence this spring assessment, some of which are ongoing. As with all of our elementary schools, we implemented instructional coaching that includes co-planning and analysis of student work. So both co-planning and co-teaching that work together. So again, they have also expanded from a kindergarten and first grade co-teaching model that had taken place for about three years to broaden that to be involved in more grade Unique to Sand Hill, they have a peer observation model with collaborative discussion where educators go into one another's classrooms to observe both for the benefit of the observer and also then to give commendations and ask questions of the host teacher. This is important in breaking down these kind of silo barriers that teachers have historically been in and really kind of open things up so that you can see the good things that are happening right next door and take advantage of that as a learning model. Sand Hill Two is working on a personalized learning model that started primarily in fourth grade, but they're doing some nice work with it and others are, are watching. The social and emotional supports, we talk about PBIS and we talk about mindfulness. I think it's important to note, and I would say this for all of the schools, that this is something that we have come to understand is really important in helping children be academically proficient, is that they are safe and healthy and encouraged both socially, emotionally, and physically in the classroom for them to be able to pursue their academics. So while it might seem like it's a little stretch for the school report cards, we believe that it is those kinds of things that are helping make kids feel safe and engaged in the learning that, in which they're working. Professional development is important across the board and Jeff has named also Mary Richards. She sounds like a goddess, but she really is very, very proficient in her craft and is very well-received and so teachers just can learn so much from her when she's here. We send teachers to the Wisconsin State Reading Association Conference. We encourage the reading specialist, host, a classroom teacher, and there's a lot of dialogue and learning that goes on. Jeff is very interested in the STEM or the STEAM work and has started to pursue some outline, outdoor learning environments. So he's sort of starting a little pathway. He had a lot of volunteers come a couple of weeks ago out to Sand Hill and start to make a learning space and get kids outside. And then he's also noted impactful coaching academy. I cannot speak to that at all. So what's going well at Sand Hill? This focus on student engagement in the literacy setting, they literally go in and watch what students are doing so that you can identify kids that kind of, that have the stamina to stay on task and the kids that maybe don't, and then intervene in that. That's such a local, local strategy or assessment, really so different than the school report card, but so fundamental in getting kids engaged to do well academically. As noted, we do, they do routine analysis of student work, literally bring in the kids' work, group it into piles, look at what do we need most and where have we missed an instructional opportunity and then go back in and do some more. Their co-planning and collaboration, grade levels, they meet weekly as they do in all of the schools. And do collaborative planning so that there is a consistent and opportunity for kids to learn. So they're looking closely at what the outcome should be. Refining the readers and workshop, readers and writers workshop, that's something that's been implemented in our elementary schools for a long time. Targeted reading and math interventions, I think, to, to your point, how does that work? We have some people that are especially assigned to those tasks. Sometimes it's a classroom teacher, sometimes it's just using time in a different way so that kids have more opportunity to learn. Something that's going particularly well, kind of started at Sand Hill and is now going well in many places, is actually conferring. That is, the educator sits down next to the student and has a very specific dialogue with the child. That is, the educator sits down next to the student and has a very specific dialogue with the child about what they're reading or what they're writing. It is, has a remarkable impact on student achievement, student growth, because what it was we were talking about was so targeted to what she needed right now. Wasn't something that was given to the whole class at the same time. And so, that kind of, we see incremental growth as a result of such conferring. And also then, family and community engagement. And he's listed book swaps, books on bikes, which they did last summer, reading with dogs on call. The dogs come in and listen to kids read aloud, and community read alouds. The next improvement actions, they too recognize that strengthening core instruction should reduce the amount of intervention that is necessary. They are taking a real close look at their use of time, instructional minutes, for both writing as well as reading and math, to make sure that we're using our time intentionally. They've incorporated writing into all of their curricular areas, which is just a great way to smuggle in more of it. Implementing action steps for their school growth in language arts, or in reading, language arts, and math. We started working on student resiliency plans. They did, both Krista and Jeff did some professional development this fall on resiliency and how kids can bounce back, or how they can set their course and not be distracted. So, they're excited to see how that impacts student learners. Also continuing with responsive classrooms for that social and emotional engagement, and then continue to explore options for math interventions. I'm happy to try and take a stab at questions for Sand Hill.
Are the dogs available for scoreboard meetings?
Wouldn't that be fun? Yeah, there we go. Very cute. Okay, I will pass.
I will tell Jeff that.
Yes. We'll pass this on to Trish Dason.
Well, it's a real honor to be here tonight because I represent the hard work of a lot of individuals at River Bluff. The teachers, the educational assistants, the office, administration, we all really come together to think about and provide excellent educational opportunities for students. In 2016, you'll see on the screen, we rewrote our mission statement. So, at River Bluff Middle School, we care for and respect all students and engage them in personally meaningful educational experiences to prepare them for a wonderful, wonderful future. And you'll see that theme kind of come through what I'm going to share tonight. I know that Mike and I, our presentations are just a little bit different because we chose to focus on our literacy instruction and our strategies from last year. So, we're going to be talking a lot about that this evening. So, you'll see here, these are the strategies that we selected last year at River Bluff to improve our English Language Arts proficiency. We did a lot of work, and again, these are very similar to the themes you heard from the elementary school. We did a lot of reading and writing and analysis of that student work. At the middle school level, that was not only in all of the reading and writing classrooms, but in social studies, science, related arts, FIAID, strength and conditioning. So, we used every single class as often as we could to really dig into reading, writing, and responding, and teaching into that process. We did a lot of ongoing professional development during the school day and after school, and used data to really set our instructional goals. We identified that we really needed to work on our alignment to national standards at each grade level, and really reinforced reading stamina and the joy of reading. One of the greatest feedback, feedback I got this year was from Jessica Fettig, who's a new teacher in eighth grade. And she said, "You know, Trish, it's just amazing. Compared to the district that I was in, kids at River Bluff are book crazy. One of the things that we mandate at River Bluff is that kids have a book with them at all times." Okay, and somebody over there remembers that. Oh, let me go back just a minute. So, I would also want to recognize that as a result of that work, we had an increase in the number of proficient and advanced students in English Language Arts over the state average. However, when you look at our overall report card score, we are not happy with that. We're down a little bit from previous years, and so, it really does give us a sense of urgency to dig in even deeper this year, which I'll talk about in a little bit to move that forward. So, really, some highlights of our literacy work then from last year is increased collaboration across the teams to plan instruction for students. We implemented research-based instructional strategies. We really worked hard to create a consistent approach to reading across all of the different grade levels. And we moved into technology last year as a part of our curriculum development and documenting the great work that teachers were doing. And we created websites that we use internally to help guide our instruction with our units and lesson plans and assessments. So, all of our learnings from last year really came together in our action steps in reading, English Language Arts, and math for the 17, 18 school year. We recognized that, and I'm sure that you've noticed, that over time, we know that the students that we have at the middle school and across the district bring a huge variety of skills and needs and interests to learning in their classroom. So, River Bluff is going to begin implementation of what's called universal design for learning, and I know that's a little bit wordy. So, I would break that strategy down as a comprehensive approach to supporting all student learning needs in the classroom with really intentional instruction based on state standards and the learning needs of students. So, with that in mind, we're really focusing this year at River Bluff on student-centered learning approaches and student-teacher relationships to increase achievement in English Language Arts and math. And I think you heard both from the elementary schools, this idea of student-centered learning, personalized learning, building relationships, student engagement. So, the three strategies that we're selecting this year is to implement weekly grade-level co-planning meetings in reading and math with really a focus on using consistent student-centered learning strategies. We are conducting monthly student data review meetings in order to plan instruction for students in reading and math and work to personalize that. And lastly, we really deeply, deeply believe at River Bluff that socio-emotional learning is the heart of all that we do. And we're going to use nurture-heart strategies in all classrooms to provide students feedback on their successes and their greatnesses, and to really ensure that we develop those positive relationships, teacher to student, student to teacher. What questions do you have?
The nurture-heart strategy, is that anything, I mean, I know you say it's a next step. Is it anything that might be provided to parents if they were interested? Because I know there's a lot of materials out there, so.
You know, I appreciate you bringing that forward. I'm meeting tomorrow with Beth Whitner, and we're talking about really reinvigorating some things that we're doing for working for kids, and I would definitely bring that forward. I know that as a part of learning about nurture-heart, I think you might know I have a seventh grader and an eighth grader. And so, yes, I am using some of those strategies because the, one of the things is about noticing what a child is doing. So, I'm noticing that you are deeply engaged in reading, and that shows me that you are working really hard to improve in reading. So, it's about noticing and then really giving students a very clear path to what helps them be successful. And so, we are working on that, recognizing their successes in behavior, but also in content areas as well. Thank you. Great idea.
Kind of along those lines, I mean, and I should know this, are you within your behavior systems, are you using a PBIS model?
Yes, we have used, I started using PBIS in 2008. And so, we have, we use the universal level, the PBIS Tier 2, and we are also really working on reinvigorate, invigorating, and I'll be sharing with the staff next Wednesday, some of our work in Tier 3 PBIS.
And what have you seen happen to the data?
I'm sorry?
What's the data doing as a result of some of these, in terms of behavior referrals?
So, what I would say is, one thing that we're noticing is the number of, we are capturing minors and majors this year. And so, as a result of our work, we're seeing the number of majors go down. I think, however, the part that we're continuing to struggle with is we are experiencing some increases in some students with significant needs in their behaviors. But overall, the number of referrals that we are having in infinite campuses decreasing. And I can provide specific numbers if you'd like.
This isn't a question. I just wanted to say that from the experience of a community member that I see frequently, it's really fun to watch the effect that the emphasis on literacy is having. This community member has to be forced to go to bed and inspected
Wonderful.
to make sure that the community member's not reading after lights out. I blame you all for this.
Much better a book than a phone, right? Flashlight under the covers, I think many of us might be guilty of that.
Old school.
Yeah.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you. We've worked really hard on that. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I guess I come out of the bullpen to wrap this up. I'll echo what Trish said before I get started, you know, thanks for letting me come here, share some information with you. But also, thanks to our staff and our students for working extremely hard at Stoughton High School last year to keep the ball moving, so to speak, and keep the train on the track. We're very proud of where we landed up, and I'll kind of move with that, Mr. Smith and I, working on data. Our school report card and strategies for improvement, last year, we used two strategies as our kind of main theme around literacy. Our teaching staff completed all SLOs, student learning or outcomes regarding literacy, and we did common assessments per quarter, did collaboration studies, you know. Every teacher focused on literacy as part of their educator effectiveness suite, which of SLOs and PPGs and those things for the state, but we all focused on literacy there. Our second strategy is we did professional development throughout the year on the workshop model around literacy and on technology, and kept adjusting and transforming instruction based on grades, based on monitoring information and instructional needs for students and those things. I was just looking at our report cards, probably not the next thing, sorry, as I focus on literacy. How we did, we maintain exceeds expectations of 74.1 on the school report card. I've just pulled it up and started looking at it, and some of the things that, you know. I'll use that on Going Well. On the next slide. Sorry. I just pulled up the school report card to look at, you know, things that transpired and what we're doing well. We're eight points ahead of the state on student achievement in combining of English Language Arts and mathematics achievement. We're seven points ahead on closing the gaps on the state on our school report card. And our graduation rate is pushing 98% at the high school, so we're very proud of those things. Our, you know, what also is going well is teachers' participation in monthly collaborative team meetings focused on monitoring student success and improving instruction. Teachers analyzing common assessments of student works quarterly and collaborating on student progress and adjusting that instruction after those meetings, using data from assessments and grades to modify instruction, and use of multi-tiered support efforts for students to be successful. And one of the things that has helped is establishment of our learning academy to provide a different kind of space, more individualized space for students that maybe have not been successful in a traditional school setting, to be more successful in school, and help engage them in their own way, in a different way that meets their needs. Creation of learning labs during academic homeroom for language arts, mathematics, world languages, to give students extra time and extra support in those curricular areas. And the development of Literacy 9 and Literacy 10 to support our students that need that extra double dose, so to speak, of literacy help to get them moving in the right direction on what they need to be successful. Our next improvement actions, which we're going to focus on, is our ACT workshop. We have over 60 or 70 students signed up to come in and work during their lunch hour, focus on ACT. Ms. Lynch and her little cohort group have done a fantastic job organizing that. Julie's done just a wonderful job getting that organized for students. We're going to continue to do learning labs throughout academic homerooms to provide students that extra support. And we'll continue to develop our Tier 3 academic behaviors and academic supports. Our counseling staff, our APs, meet weekly and go over all the students based on attendance, behavioral, academics, and what we can do to adjust and modify to help them be successful. It happens every week at the high school. And we'll continue to do, build school culture and student leadership and development of that. We have brought in a speaker for mindfulness for some of our students that need extra things to get a little bit better focus, give them some more tools to work on. That's part of what we're doing. Next two weeks from now will be Kindness Week, will be the kickoff of an introduction of Mike McGowan, who's coming up and working with high school on a series throughout this whole year and for next year. And it will be also Back to School Night, working with parents if they choose to come to those meetings. Well, Mike focuses on, and I've worked with Mike before, he focuses on school improvement around basically good school culture, good student leadership choices, and throwing a dose of good choices around AODA issues and stuff. So, we're working on that for whole school development and student leadership development. He'll work with our Student Senate, and he'll work with our Life of Lighting Students as well, in a small group setting. So, that's kind of where we're headed and what we're doing and what we did last year as well. So, any questions?
Just a comment on Mike McGowan.
Yeah.
He's good stuff.
Yeah. I work with Mike since the fall, and I remember, so.
He's got really good stuff.
Yeah, he's really good at what he does. Good. All right. Thanks, guys.
I'm just going to give you the last slide summary here. A synthesis of all of the focus areas, I think we're going to try and capture those here, both literacy and mathematics. Mathematics has gotten a little boost in interest this year, based on several indicators, this assessment being one of them. ACT vocabulary is something that is emphasized throughout the high school. I think Mike maybe undersold, he's got professional development going on every month. I think probably all of the principals, probably, all of the principals have local, site-based professional development that's going on every month, in addition to the district and service days. The minutes of instruction and a student's schedule and pacing to find that sense of urgency and that we have no minutes to waste. Student involvement in learning and goal-setting, you heard that from several of us, talking about the kids that know where they want to go, know what they need to do, actually have a better chance of getting there. Technology as a tool, you probably remember from the fall when we rolled out an awful lot of Chromebooks that have been really, really successful and have proven to be useful to students as they're setting their goals and achieving them. And then, this collaboration idea that happens weekly for that consistent opportunity to learn. We want all of the kids to have a guaranteed viable curriculum and the opportunity to learn. So, I would synthesize all of those actions, those six ideas. And then, welcome any questions that you have for the group or for me or.
Yeah, so, I'm pretty new to digesting the report cards. And you guys have mentioned to me in the past that from year to year, comparing report cards directly doesn't always work because the assessment criteria changes. Has there been any significant changes in the assessment criteria from this year to last year? So, if I were to go backwards and look at our schools' report cards side by side, I would, you know, be able to.
That's a great question. The assessment criteria, no. So, we have two years' worth of testing that has been consistent.
Okay.
There are several things that I could probably share with you that have caused fluctuations, the change in using value-added to determine growth. One of the things we see is that in schools and districts who have greater student One of the things we see is that in schools and districts who have greater student, greater numbers in students of poverty, growth carries more weight than achievement, and then vice versa. Where we have less poverty, achievement carries more weight than growth. And if your levels of poverty fluctuate, that can also impact the algorithm for determining the weight of achievement and the weight of growth. And I wish I could give to you the algorithm, multiple algorithms that are used there, and they're really not available to us.
Okay.
But just so that you have, like, in the back of your mind, that there's some of that, there are some, those kinds of fluctuations. I wouldn't use that as an excuse at all, just that there are some fluctuations. It's important to remember that when you compare third graders this year, oh, let's do it the other way around, when you compare fifth graders this year, the fifth graders from last year are a different group of people, they're now sixth graders. And so that would be a cohort analysis, and we're really not looking at, you know, an analysis of individuals on this assessment. We can dig down and find it, but it's really more important for programming and guiding our instructional decisions. So I just also made that out again, that it's, this compares sixteen, seventeen fifth graders with the children that were in fifth grade the year before and the year before that.
So you mentioned changes in demographics, like percentage of students in poverty. Do we have any significant changes in demographics in any of our schools that you know off the top of your head?
I don't know off the top of my head. They wouldn't have been significant, but they are different between schools.
Okay.
Yours is significant? Okay, Trish is talking about the cell size, which is a little bit different than levels of poverty, so I'm just going to let that one go.
I don't think it's changed significantly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Well, first, I just, I just to make a comment, I was very impressed with, you know, it's great to see that there's a big focus on improving core instruction, because that's really where it starts, but also a recognition you have to have strong Tier Two, Tier Three systems in place, interventions in place, knowing that there are going to be students that come that have significant challenges that need to be addressed that, first of all, fall outside of the locus we control in regards to them developing those, but also, you know, where core instruction usually isn't going to be enough. So I was very pleased to see that both of those things were addressed and all these good work.
Well, thank you all very much for taking us through all of that.
Thank you.
And last thing, our discussion is for John to update us about the ad hoc committee.
Yeah.
Are you prepared to do so?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the ad hoc committee met for the first time last month. It took us a couple, couple months to get everybody's schedules aligned for our first meeting, but we wanted to make sure that we got as many, as many of our committee members available for the first meeting as we could, because we were hoping to define a mission statement, because we had, we had some direction from the Joint Committee of the Board of Education and the City Council, but we weren't sure how formal it was. So in that first meeting, we spent the bulk of our time trying to figure out what our ad hoc committee could do, what sort of role we could fill in, or, I guess, what sort of mission we could fulfill that still fit somewhere within the direction that we were provided. So the direction that we were originally provided, as it was written up in the minutes, were to look into marketing the Stoughton area community and to create policies to encourage more development of single-family housing. And as we were discussing in our committee, that initial direction sounded, sounded like we were, we were set up to create marketing ourselves for the Stoughton area community and to create policies ourselves that we would then pass off to the, to that, back up to that Joint Committee or to the Board of Education and the City Council. And we sort of felt like we, if there was marketing to be done, or if we, if everyone determined that there was marketing to be done, or that marketing would be valuable to help bring younger families to Stoughton, or to help continue to bring young families to Stoughton, we felt that our committee, or our ad hoc committee itself, probably wouldn't be the ones to design that marketing. So in generating a mission statement, the draft that we have is in the agenda, and I'll read it real quick. It is "To study the strengths and potential areas of improvement for the Stoughton community in order to develop recommendations to the City Council, Stoughton School Board, and Chamber of Commerce to promote growth in the student population." So we want to, we want to make sure that when we do create a mission statement, that everybody can sign off on that being the Board of Education and the City Council primarily. We want to make sure that since we don't, as an ad hoc committee, have any power to, to create, create marketing, or spend money, or anything like that, that, that we keep ourselves more on the research side of, of the issue of sort of recruiting and retaining young families, or the types of families that are going to keep our schools full and keep our community, community growing and vibrant. So we, we are, I guess, sort of looking for feedback from the board and from the City Council before our next meeting, which is coming up on the thirteenth of December, but also future meetings, to make sure that, that you guys are comfortable with the direction that we're going. Tim and Joe, do you guys have anything to add there or clarify?
Just that, you know, as John said, a lot of discussion on what was the purpose of the committee, and the committee felt that they themselves would not be the ones that would be implementing anything. It would be the three different entities, hence the study and then develop recommendations to the three entities about how to move forward.
Sounds right. I think we're just looking for direction, make sure that's where both bodies want us to be headed, is roughly in the direction of this mission statement.
So with, yeah, with that mission statement, to give you guys an idea of what we're planning on doing for, for the second meeting and moving forward, we're trying to figure out between the Chamber of Commerce, the Board of Education, or the, the school district, really, and, and the City Council, and also the entities in the city, how can we pull together data or existing research that we've possibly already done, or assets that we already have, to sort of assess how well Stoughton is able to attract and retain the families that are going to help keep our school populations up? So the school district has all of the families that exist, you know, where we have all of the people, the types of people that we would be trying to target to get to come and live in this community in the first place. So one, one thing that Tim's mentioned, or that we could immediately, or one bit of value that we could immediately add, is to poll all of the families that we have in our district and figure out what it is that they like about Stoughton, and what it is that they'd like to see improved about Stoughton, and not just from a school district perspective, from a, from a community perspective. So since the school district has access to those families, that might be a bit of information that we'd be able to give. The, the city and the Chamber of Commerce are also going back before they come to the next meeting to see if there is any information that they'd be able to provide us. We, the, the city in particular just went through a long, a long process of coming up with a, a long-term comprehensive plan, and, and sort of an estimate, or their estimates for, for growth, or what types of, what types of growth they might expect, and we figured there might be some data in there that they have already collected that would be useful to our ad hoc committee to help, help figure out what direction Stoughton is moving. So we want to figure out what, what direction Stoughton is moving as it pertains to, to young families, and if that, if that direction is okay, how can, how can we help continue moving that direction, or if we, or if we think that the community needs some adjustment to bring in the types of families that are going to keep our school system filled, you know, what, what are potential adjustments that we could then report back to, or, report back to the, the school board and the city itself? So with all of that, does anyone have any, any questions or concerns, or, or feedback or advice for things that we could continue to be considering as we shape this ad hoc committee?
When you were talking about what assets we have that would retain and attract families, are you thinking along the lines of housing, the school district, things to do, just shopping?
Yeah.
I mean, were there other things that you were looking at that you were counting as assets?
Um, I, I mean, I don't, I don't think we've defined the scope of...
You didn't really go there yet?
Yeah, things that would be attractive in, in any, I mean, we, we didn't even really talk about the specifics of the things that we think could help our community continue to grow in a sustainable way.
Okay.
But I, I mean, I think some of the, the easy problems to target are people, these families need places to live, which is, is one area where Stoughton's a little bit short right now. And then they need, you know, they need schools, and they need things, things to do. So, I mean, not saying that there are any, any problems or issues in any of those other areas, but we know, we already know that housing is, is one area where the community is a little bit short. So I imagine that we'll be looking at, at housing specifically, but outside of that, I think that's part of what a survey of all of the families that we have in the area right now would be really useful for. We could at least get information from the people who live here right now. But, yeah, we'll also be looking to try and find ways to get information from people who, who don't live here, who would think about living here, so, and compare ourselves to other communities, so. Yeah.
What's the time, timeframe that, you know, do you guys have a, did you talk about time parameters for looking out two years, five years, ten years?
We have not yet. So we, we wanted to make sure that our, our mission made sense to begin with. We wanted to come back to the school board and to the City Council specifically, and make sure that both of these entities feel like our committee has, like, some idea of, I don't know, meaningful value that we could provide. So if, if we get feedback from the board after this past meeting and this coming meeting, if, if our first couple of meetings seem to have us moving in a, in a good direction, then I think we'll be able to get, or wrap our minds a little bit more around the type of information that we're trying to gather, and how long it will take to get meaningful information.
So if I could just comment on the mission, I think it's a good mission statement. I, I like that it's broad, however, that could also be a detriment, because it's so broad, you know, how do you fit your arms around it? And I, and I'd be happy to, to talk offline a little bit about this, but Dane County has a council on climate change, where they're looking at demographics, transportation, land use, you know, you name it. They're looking at a lot of aspects in order to, you know, minimize CO2 emissions. So there might be some things that come out of that. I'm on the Transportation and Land Management Committee, or Working Group, I should say, and what I've found is that there's some really smart people at UW who know a lot about each one of these subjects.
Okay.
And so tapping into some of that research, there's heat maps that show, it's just, I won't go into it, there's just a lot of information.
A lot of information, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm on this committee, and I wasn't able to attend, but I, I liked the mission statement a lot. A couple of things I, I think to think about is, is a process, research process for how you're going to study strengths. There's a, there's a process I have some familiarity with called asset mapping. It's through the University, a guy named Robert Knight, I think, is the pioneer of it, but that might be something to look at, and I can bring some literature on that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'm also wondering, I think of a few weeks ago when Tim brought to us, okay, it was the innovation, if that's a place to start introducing some of that. I mean, and the reason I share that is, is as I think about this, I think about, we certainly need, people need places to live, but then developers need reasons to build places for people to live. And I think if you can carve out this innovative idea, this, even if it's conceptual, for the future, I think of, wow, you know, this is going to be a place to be in 2020, 2022. I, I think the more we cannot just, I think studying the current strengths and opportunities for improvement, but also starting to talk about, you know, how are we going to marry all of these, these, these things we have, these ideas? I think, Tim, you had mentioned it's a synthesis of a lot of things that you've been here. Whether that, whether that lives in this committee or not, I don't know, but I mean, I'd really like to at some point get back to that. And this does seem like a possible context for us to even just talk about a little bit, but, but other than that, it seems like we're on the right track here.
I think that, I think that one thing I noticed from the, the Joint Committee that then formed this, this sub-ad hoc committee, is, is that getting the, the school district and the city, even at a, at a bare minimum, together to sort of start talking about, about strengths and weaknesses within their systems, just having all of those people in one room who represent different aspects of our community, seems, seems to be pushing conversation in a meaningful direction for all of us to, to help understand, like, what Stoughton, what Stoughton is right now, what, what it might be able to be, or, or what people want it to be. And so with, with this ad hoc committee then tasked with what seems like a bit of a research role, I'm hoping that we can just get as many different stakeholders in the Stoughton community talking about what they see Stoughton as and wanting it to be, and then maybe get a, help that, promote discussion that, that gets the community shaping or rallying around some sort of vision. So I, I agree with you that, that with, with the school district, or, or any other entities in Stoughton, being loud and vocal about their visions separately, maybe, maybe as a whole, we'll be able to come up with something that is, that we're able to build around.
All right, well, thanks, John, that was very informative. We do have two items under discussion action, both of them policies. And before we proceed to Policy 707, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve changes to Policy 707, high school graduation, to reflect the changes in credits through, to be consistent through the whole policy, as well as some other minor revisions as noted.
Oh, second. There's a motion, and a second. You want to walk us through this, or since it's a second read, do we just want to throw it open for discussion?
I'll throw it open for discussion. It is the second time that we talked about it. This is really was, as I talked about last time, it was just, we, we didn't include all the credits throughout the entire policy to be consistent with practice. Any other questions about it?
Okay, Becky, is this a roll call?
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Coughlin?
Aye.
Ms. Sword?
Aye.
Ms. Tarpidian?
Yes.
Vice President Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Buban?
Yes.
And that policy is adopted. Policy 714, educational rights... Policy 714, Educational Rights for Parents and Guardians, I would entertain a motion.
So...
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this policy?
Well, let's just summarize what that motion is. The policy is being renamed to be more reflective of what it's actually trying to address. And much of the policy, the procedures and processes have been moved out into guidelines to better reflect the purpose.
Are there questions about that? I have a question. When you say move to the guidelines, that's sort of a pattern that we're basically following with our policies at this point? So you're just being consistent with...
We are, and there's just, yeah, because when, when one little thing changes, we have to bring it back to policy, which then comes, you know, we have to deal with it at that committee, then we bring it here for two reads. And sometimes things need to be a little bit more responsive, you know, in a, in a more timely fashion. We're trying to make policies be the, more of just sort of the, the meat of this is what we want and what we, you know, reflect our values, and then the actual processes to be a little bit more flexible.
Are there other questions?
I guess I do have a question. Does this imply that for pretty much any reason, a parent or guardian can have their child removed from an educational lesson, right? Okay, just to be clear.
And this isn't changing what we've been doing? I mean, this, they've always had this, we aren't adding this ability, or this is the way it's always been, it just wasn't very clear, especially with the name student privacy, if somebody was looking for it. So I don't know how much it happens, but we do have the policy.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Can you go ahead and take the vote, please?
Sure. Mr. Coughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Ms. Tarpinion?
Yes.
Ms. Sore?
Yes.
Mr. Buban?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Vice President Fry?
Aye.
And that policy is adopted. And the only thing we have remaining on the agenda then are the future meetings, all of which are listed by our...
Could I ask a question about that? I see December eighteenth, we have a regular board meeting, but we also have a board development meeting?
No, that's January twenty-eighth, sorry.
That's...
It's missing us.
Okay. Oh, so it's January twenty-ninth, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, all right. That was, I guess I didn't understand. Okay, so it, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that it was on my calendar.
And that the next meeting, the December eighteenth meeting, would communication and the compensation committee is scheduled to give an update to the board on their work.
One thing I would mention is tomorrow night, there's a facilities meeting which is exclusively for the eighteen ninety-two building. I mean, students from the university presenting, Steve has seen it, I have not, but I understand it's worth coming to if anyone is at all interested in what's going on with the eighteen ninety-two building. Yeah, that's at six o'clock.
Question?
Here.
Is that going to be streamed or videotaped at some?
Yes. Yeah. Anyone else have anything? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? We are adjourned.